Or an outside, which is good. I mean, it's another week or so I don't have to turn my sprinklers on, so saving some water. So first thing we have on our agenda for our work session tonight is a middle housing development code update, which is the Twalton 2040 implementation. I'm looking around pictures. I see Steve, I see Tabitha.
Yes, Mary. Thank you. We're here with, we're here also with John Venus, our consultant with MIG. This is all Matt Straight, consultant with MIG, but John is going to lead the presentation tonight.
Welcome.
All right. Good to see you all. Thank you for having me. I'm John Venus. I'm a project manager with MIG, planning and consulting firm that's been helping the city of Twalton with this project. It's good to see you all again. Thanks for having us. As Steve mentioned, I'm joined tonight with Matt Straight, who is our principal at MIG. He's been involved with this project and is steeped in the middle housing world and the proposed changes we're going to be talking about tonight. So first things first, everybody hear me okay? Sound coming through. Let me share my screen. It looks like I don't have the permission to share. So if someone's able to switch that on, that would be great. There we go. Perfect. Okay. Great. Well, again, thanks for having us tonight. This is a very exciting project. We've done a lot of work on this. We've got a lot of news to share on what we've been doing since only a month ago when we last met. So very excited to talk with you all and have some discussion and continue the kind of the questions and discussion that we had from last month. So tonight's presentation, I do want to bring us back up to speed since a lot of us saw the presentation are familiar with the work that city staff have been doing on middle housing in Twalton, but I did want to bring us back up to speed on that work and some of the background to that. I know some of us might not have seen that. So I do want to go back through that, but spend more time talking about two major topics for the presentation tonight. One is results from the community survey that we had over the last couple of weeks with questions around this project and the proposed changes to zoning. And then the second is talk about some of the discussion that we had last month. When we talked about what this project was, what it is we're doing, a lot of you had some specific comments about topics that are central to the code amendment. So what we want to do is walk through what those topics are and some responses to those topics and questions that you had last month. And then lastly, we do want to share what we'll be doing next following this meeting, including what those next steps are for seeing the amendments, doing the draft review, public comments, public hearing and so on. So we'll make sure we have time for that. Finally, we'll have some time for additional questions and discussions. So the project purpose, why we're talking about this, as I mentioned, we spent some time going through these bullets last month. But really what we're doing is working through the existing zoning code to help update current requirements around housing. And so the objectives are really to remove code barriers to different housing types, to remove any subjective development code requirements for middle housing and to coordinate with recent rules related to housing based on state rules for middle housing, House Bill 2001. So it's really a chance to align the zoning code, the implementing tool that the city has for development with Twalton 2040, which talked a lot about housing and the values that the city has and the vision for housing, a particular middle housing, as well as the recent state requirements. House Bill 2001, we spent some time talking about this last month and just wanted to highlight some of the facts around House Bill 2001. The purpose of this bill and the rules is to expand housing options across Oregon. We know that there's a demand for housing in Oregon, as is the case in much of the West Coast and across the country. And a really helpful solution is looking at middle housing. And these are housing that we used to see in cities that you don't see as much of anymore, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes and cottage cluster developments. And then the other part of this, these rules is to take a look at the code, look at what's required and help identify any areas of the code that would result in unreasonable costs or delay. And these are parts of the code that may pass some of these costs on to potential home buyers or renters from requirements related to, you know, the timing of any requirements, the complexities around those requirements, to the vagueness of some of those comments and requirements. I showed this image last time and I know there were some comments around, you know, what is included in House Bill 2001? What are we looking at as a city? And the requirements as far as state rules are involved really respond to those housing types I just listed off. So the duplex, triplex, quadplex, townhouse and cottage cluster. This image shows a few more cottage court, which is what we're calling cottage clusters for purposes of the House Bill 2001 requirements. But there are also some others here under that broad umbrella of middle housing, including mixed use development, live-work opportunities. And these are all things that we can look at that the city is actively pursuing for options to improve housing choice in Twalton. But the changes that we're really looking at tonight really involve looking at how do we best bring the zoning code up to speed with Twalton 2040 and House Bill 2001. So look back at our schedule. We started back in October 2020. We went through a audit of the existing code to look for areas that are in conflict with the housing needs analysis with House Bill 2001 that basically give us a set of instructions to say, what are some things that we need to do to update the code to be in compliance with state rules and to help implement Twalton 2040? So here we are in May of 2021. The work that MIG has been helping the city with is part of a grant through DLCD, through the Department of Land Conservation Development. So our scope of work essentially ends this month from our contract and we'll be handing off materials for the, for city staff to continue through, which we'll talk about towards the end of the presentation. So on to the next, next issue here is the topics that we talked about last month. And there were some, some good discussion around a variety of topics that we want to go through tonight. I'll go through each one of these step by step, parking, housing infill, maintenance, environment, infrastructure and safety and housing choices and certainty. And you'll see these highlighted in the staff report as well as some of the slides that I'll talk about here in just a second. Before we dive into those topics though, I did want to point out some of the findings from the recently closed community survey for middle housing. And this was something that we wanted to do to find out, you know, what is the community interested in seeing? What are some of their concerns and what are their priorities for these code amendments? Something to keep in mind, and many of you hopefully had a chance to take, take this survey and complete the survey. But a couple of things I do want to point out, this is not a statistically significant survey. So the results of this tool that we used, it was a cost-effective way to hear from the community, but this by no means is a sample of the population. So please keep that in mind when we look through these results. We did have a good turnout. We had 143 respondents as of Friday. We closed the survey on Friday. So we had 143 respondents, which is a good, you know, good turnout. It's a good way to see what folks that completed the survey, what they think about potential changes. So a couple of findings from the survey, most respondents said that they live in a single family detached home, so 75%. Only 5% said they live in a middle housing type home, so a duplex or a townhouse. So that's another thing to keep in mind as we look through some of the results. You know, we asked another question, since this is a fairly technical, complicated topic that we're discussing around zoning, zoning code and zoning changes. We asked the question, you know, how familiar are you with zoning in the city of Twalton? And so the majority said, you know, I'm not that familiar or I maybe have a little familiarity. But a lot fewer were very familiar. So I think that's important for how we talk about this with the community, you know, how we ask questions about zoning and more importantly, how we expect to get the feedback and any changes on any potential issues. Steve, did you have something?
Just to interject, we're all seeing your presenter view. I just wanted to see if you could switch it to the normal view for the PowerPoint.
Yes, sorry about that.
Thank you.
As soon as I closed out.
You can hide it under the ellipses, the three dots underneath the circle. That'll give you the option to hide presenter view.
Let's see. Any changes there? Is it still showing up?
Not yet.
Not yet. Sorry about that, folks. Let me just figure that out really quickly.
As an alternative, I also have the presentation, obviously not with this latest result, but I have the presentation ready to go. I can present if you guys need.
Okay, thanks. Let me, sorry about that. Let me just. Why don't we all get through the, the survey results and maybe we'll just switch over to the other presentation. Everything else is the same, if that works. Okay. So a few of the results, and then we'll switch back to the other view, and I apologize for that. A few of the results here, I think it's very telling about, you know, even though this isn't a significantly valid survey, I think it's interesting to see what some of the results are. We asked about some of the priorities that respondents had for middle housing. So if we're looking at improving opportunities to encourage middle housing, to, you know, remove barriers to middle housing, what are some of the priorities that you have? And so these are some of the top results. You know, again, I think you'll see some similarities with Twalton 2040 on what, what people are interested in seeing, opportunities for first time home seekers, affordable housing, you know, places for people to age in place for multi-generational living. So again, I think even though some of the respondents may not have as much familiarity with zoning, I think we can say that we see a lot of knowledge about what the benefits of middle housing might be. Some other results here, you know, I think overall we saw a lot of interest in saying, if we have changes, let's try to make the changes and the new requirements make middle housing look a lot like the single family housing that we see today. So really it's more about what, you know, how do we fit in with existing neighborhoods? We want to make sure those standards are applying throughout. And that's very consistent with the state rules on anything that is essentially required for single family detached housing. We want to have similar to middle housing. So by and large, that was a key finding from the survey. The second is, I know we will talk about parking in just a minute, but another question we wanted to ask is, what are your thoughts on changes to parking, to required off-street parking? So we had some mixed results here. 42% would not support any less required parking, but 40% would support, you know, some sort of trade-off if it came to encouraging or allowing middle housing. Maybe there's some trade-off in reducing required parking and then 15% were unsure. So again, it's, it's a little bit of a mix, but I think the important fact is here, there wasn't an overwhelming, you know, response to say, no way, this is, this is not something that we want to see. It's a little bit more mixed than that. And then the last finding I thought I want, we wanted to highlight tonight is overall, you know, some of the amendments that we're talking about, some of those proposed, proposed trade-offs, those changes, is this the right path? You know, do you think this is the right path for Twalton? And the majority, 52% said, you know, this is about right. We think that middle housing types should look and feel like single family homes look like today, similar rules and standards. That, that makes sense. 16% on one end of the spectrum felt that we should have more specific and more strict standards for middle housing. And on the other side of the spectrum, 20% said they're too restrictive. Let's, let's encourage middle housing by more flexibility and standards and what we require. So just a snapshot, snapshot of some of those changes, especially is in terms of how we talk about some of the key findings that follow. So since I can't get my PowerPoint to work the way we need it to, we'll switch over to the next screen. So what we want to do next is talk about the particular meeting topics and discussion points that we had from last month. So first topic we wanted to talk about tonight is parking. So what are some of the potential strategies we want to cover for any proposed amendments around required off-street parking? So next slide. I think there's one slide before this one we want to touch on. Okay, next slide. All right. This, this one is probably the best place to start. And what we're really talking about is the balance of the, you know, the vision from Twalton 2040 around, you know, encouraging and allowing more middle housing and how do we do that? What are some strategies to do that with the requirements of House Bill 2001? And I think one of the biggest points is parking. And so parking is a big part of a, you know, new housing development, of infill development. It's typically one of the more costly aspects of any new project. You know, you're basically taking up what you could use for housing, you're taking that space up for parking. There've been lots of studies that, that point to, you know, the cost of that parking, of that required parking, where that comes from, how that gets passed on to, as I mentioned before, to potential homeowners, to folks that are looking to rent a home, that cost gets passed on. So right off the bat, that's one of those kind of critical areas. It's important for livability. We talked about that last month, but it's also one of those areas where, you know, how much is too much, how much isn't enough? And where's that balance to really make sure we can allow and encourage middle housing? So the first, the first point here is what's required for state rules through House Bill 2001? And overall, House Bill 2001 requires some reduction in required off-street parking for middle housing. And again, that's really a strategy to enable middle housing in especially in areas that have, you know, smaller lot sizes where it's going to be trickier to allow for, for middle housing. So some examples here of some samples of different middle housing types, duplexes, townhomes, triplexes, quadplexes, you could see some of the potential changes. So for example, the existing standard in the Twalton zoning code is two spaces per unit. And under the new rules statewide, it would be one space per unit max. So again, an overall reduction, but I think it's important to keep in mind, and I think it's pointed out in the staff report about some of the strategies that stay in place, that remain, that the city will, will continue to keep. And an example includes not counting garage parking as that off-street parking standard. So we'll have, you know, if you're, if you're building a garage, if you have a garage space, there's another space that would be allowed there and other standards that would exist, such as dimensions for those spaces, not, not counting on-street parking. You know, one for one, if I have an on-street parking space, does that get me credit for off-street parking spaces? That wouldn't change as well. So a lot of the requirements would stay. We would just look at, you know, how do we meet the, the new state law on reducing those required spaces for off-street parking? I want to point out too, there were some, some concerns in the open-ended comments of the survey about removing, you know, all off-street parking, removing requirements for all off-street parking. And that is not part of the proposal or part of the state rules. It's just looking at reducing what's, what's required for required off-street parking. So next slide. Let's see. Okay. So this is the one we, this is the one we covered, so we can keep going. Next slide. Okay. Second topic, housing infill. So I think parking, we could, we could kind of combine into, how do we preserve character? You know, I think there's the identity of Twalton. A lot of, a lot of residents are interested in maintaining and protecting. But last month, we talked about how do we preserve the character of Twalton if we're looking at infill development? So next slide. So a couple of strategies on speaking to this point. And the first is, again, it goes back to the survey responses. I think a lot of, a lot of folks are interested in maintaining that, that look and feel of existing neighborhoods in Twalton that is predominantly single family residential. And so the first strategy here is really in line with state rules to apply the same sets of standards for housing development that you would have for single family residential, single family detached residential to duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes and cottage cluster development in most cases. So we would keep those same standards, but we would also apply those to middle housing. So that's, that's the first strategy here. The second would be like we do for our single family housing today in Twalton. It would be allowing that flexibility from a menu of design options for middle housing. So for example, today the code allows for, you know, choose, choose of this menu, choose what you'd like to apply, whether it's a front porch, you know, variety and use of materials. That's how you meet the intent of the zoning. We would, we would want to do the same thing for middle housing. So again, preserving the character by requiring middle housing to have the same set of standards as single family detached housing. Excellent. So some other approaches here is looking at kind of how we space out housing, applying single family detached setback standards to middle housing. Again, keeping those, those standards across different housing types. So making sure we're consistent with setbacks, with yards and so on. And for, for certain cases, especially for cottage cluster development, introducing what's called floor area ratio, which is a way to control the bulk or the mass of a building by the, the area that it sits on and the footprint that that building takes up. So, you know, if we want to control for a really tall bulky building, we can do that through floor area ratio standards to make sure we have a more, you know, a housing that is more similar to the neighborhood that it sits within. That's a way we can do that through floor area ratio. Excellent. Okay. Third topic is, is maintenance. Again, these are all very related. You know, we're talking about compatibility with neighbors, compatibility with the livability of Twalton. So a comment last month that we talked about was maintenance. And part of that was around, you know, how do we do that? How do we make sure that middle housing, you know, is, is high quality? That it, that it looks just like, you know, any other kind of single family home, that it really is well maintained. So we wanted to talk about that as well. Excellent. So the first, I think that came up, we talked about this a little bit at our last meeting, is, you know, what about homeowners associations? Is that really something that the city can do to regulate, you know, well-maintained, well-maintained housing? So again, a couple of pros and cons to that approach. The first is, you know, we, we look at homeowners associations as a way to kind of control maintenance from a centralized perspective. We can tailor that to individual developments, you know, depending on where that is, how big those developments are and so on. But some of the challenges to that are, again, costs that get, that get passed down to homeowners, to, to potential renters of middle housing. And HOAs aren't something that the city can really enforce. You know, these are agreements of folks as they move into neighborhoods, but not really something the city or the council can take an active measure in, in controlling. So what are some potential solutions? One is the city's existing code compliance program. So making sure, you know, we know exactly how that's working. You know, what are some of the policies we might look at around housing and code compliance? As well as some additional strategies. We've got a few here, rental housing maintenance standards of the code. So again, some specific standards we might want to consider for rental housing and rental housing inspection opportunities as well. So those, those are a couple of different potential approaches we might want to look into if there's interest in that. Next slide. The next topic is kind of a big one. I think we had lots of different comments around middle housing, but really in terms of growth, you know, the city is growing. If we're talking about residential infill, you know, what does that do to our city, to our neighborhoods, the environment, infrastructure and safety? So a pretty big topic, many topics in one here, but we wanted to talk a little bit about our thoughts in terms of middle housing. So next slide. The first here is that the development standards apply to the size of a structure and not necessarily the number of units. So a lot of the standards that I think we talked about last month around, you know, what about tree retention or stormwater management? Or things like, you know, if we're talking about on-street parking or denser housing, what does that do to the vision clearance around a corner, around an intersection? Can I see where I'm going? A lot of those standards will continue to be in place and it's really about triggering those standards based off of, you know, the, the size of a structure versus the number of units. So again, I think a lot of the standards that we talked about won't be, you know, negatively impacted by any of the amendments that, that we're, we're talking about for middle housing. I think a broader, a broader thing to think about here too is, and this came out with the, you know, Twalton 2040 with the housing needs analysis, is looking at infill development as, you know, one, a really good solution to improving housing supply and housing choice, but as a really viable alternative to looking to grow larger, to grow outside, you know, outside of the urban growth boundary and looking at opportunities for greenfield development. This is really a chance to look at infill development where those opportunities exist. And then cottage cluster development. This is really, again, going back to those, some of those values that some of the survey respondents talked about, which is, these are some, some opportunities to provide a housing type that doesn't currently exist, where we're, we're providing opportunities for folks like older adults and people with disabilities that really want a housing type like this. That's, that's really part of the fabric of the community. So again, a lot of the values that middle housing can bring, you know, with, with these changes in the code amendments. Excellent. And then last topic we wanted to hit on for tonight, based off of what we had talked about in our discussion last month, is what can we do as a city to provide housing choice? I think a lot of you, you know, recognize the fact that we're talking about zoning as sort of a, you know, a control for some of the things we don't want to see or some of the things that we want to control for and manage. But really it kind of goes beyond that. How do we promote middle housing and really proactively encourage middle housing? The next slide. So a few things that we wanted to highlight, and I think we touched on these, you know, back when we talked about why middle housing, what it means for Twalton. And the first, especially as, as House Bill 2001 is, is looking at as well, is making sure that zoning looks at it and provides a predictable review process. So, you know, the development community, they're looking at, looking at infill opportunities. If there's a review process, if there's a, you know, zoning review and administrative review process, they're looking for predictability. How much time is this going to take? You know, what does this do for the cost of, of new development? Can I make this, can I make this pencil? And so that predictability is critical from the development standpoint. You know, small developer just wanting to build a house to, you know, bigger developer wanting to maybe look at a larger development, that predictability, predictability is a big factor that we want to consider. Conversely, the unpredictability, that adds costs. It can reduce housing supply in the long run. You know, we're basically turning off those opportunities just because it's, it's going to be harder to, to look at middle housing as a viable product for, for. turning off those opportunities just because it's, it's going to be harder uh to, to look at middle housing as a viable um product for, for Tuolton. And then encouraging new, new housing types. There's a kind of a sidebar or, or um project process um going on as we've been working on the House Bill 2001 concurrency, which is House Bill 2003, looking at encouraging housing production and housing supply. So um, I think that's worth pointing out tonight that the code amendments to look at encouraging middle housing kind of runs in tandem with the city's look at encouraging housing supply, and that's done through a variety of means, um, some of which could include some of the ideas we talked about last month, looking at um potential zoning changes, you know, mixed-use housing, live-work units, those types of things. So there are a number of different, different strategies in addition to the, the code amendments that we're talking about uh for, for middle housing. So next slide. So at this point, um, as I mentioned, we're going to help the city um and staff kind of get everything we need um to get the code amendments together, to get, to take it to the draft review process. But at this point, I think um Steve and Tabitha, if you want to talk a little bit more about next steps.
Sure, thanks, John. Um, in regards to the slide, what I think I just wanted to emphasize is although we have hoped, hoped that this presentation um and what the materials we presented uh address the topics that had been raised before, and we think that between the public open house that we had and then obviously the survey that we've engaged with the public adequately to understand what some of the issues are additionally. Um, that said, of course, the final amendments will have their own public process where um we'll publish newspaper notice of the amendments. We'll have the amendments themselves posted on our website, and then we'll have public meetings with the Planning Commission and City Council all before this gets adopted. And so um while again, we hope that we've come here prepared to address the issues that were mentioned, there are additional opportunities for input. Thanks, John.
Yeah. All right, just a couple more slides, and I, I do want to make sure we um turn it back over to you all for some more discussion. Um, but there's, if you can go to the next slide, um, the project website, so um that is a, a continues to be a really good source of information. We've got links to all of the background materials that um city staff and, and MIG team have, have put together. Um, so that's a really good resource. If you're wanting to dig more, to look at more of the information, we've got the code audit, code concepts, that's all included in that website. So um, take a look at that if, if you're interested in digging a little deeper. That information is, is really helpful there. I think we also have some links to the uh state uh House Bill 2001 information. Uh, they've got all sorts of really good resources as well, if you're interested in um looking into that further. All right, next slide. So I think this is the last uh bit of the presentation. I, I did want to make sure, we had some really good questions last month, and um hopefully some of the information that we pulled together a few tonight helped with some of the questions that you had. Uh, but this is a very, you know, very uh kind of multifaceted topic that we're talking about. So um, we did want to make sure we were able to talk about any other questions that you had. Uh, maybe there's something that came up tonight that you wanted to learn more about, uh, or some other areas that, you know, you, you've given some thoughts to that you're interested in hearing more about. Um, so with that, I'd like to turn it back over for any questions that you have of us. And other information that you're hoping to find out more about related to middle housing.
Get to start. Um, well, I had two things. Um, on the HOAs, it sounds like that's not something, um, my concern on the HOAs is that we're looking at middle supposedly affordable housing and that that's an, an additional burden and cost on people, but it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, that really um, it's the development that decides, or it's the um, I think some of those condos are required by law. So it's not really something the city can um promote or um eliminate. Is that correct?
Yes, Steve or Tabitha?
Sure, I, I can jump in. I, I think that the question was whether or not the code amendments should include a requirement that um, that middle housing have it. And so I think we wanted to thoroughly research that question and provide some answers. Um, I think your point is agreed with, based on the research we did, that it does add cost. And that I think the city possibly could require them, but ultimately how they're implemented is privately done. And so I think the recommendation on our part was not to require them in all cases.
Okay, thank you. I agree with that. Um, and then the parking issue, my, my concern is, um, did, have they done studies to um, like if you have a three-bedroom townhouse, say, um, like the number of people, adults that typically would live in those, because um, you know, we're not Portland and um, so I would assume most people out here are going to have every adult, probably twenty to eighty at least, are likely to own their own car. So um, I'm just concerned that if we have one spot and you have a three-bedroom house with two people, I guess we'll have the garage. So I really appreciate all the work you've done to try to mitigate that, but I still would just want to voice that I have a concern with uh um, you know, especially since these units are going to be close together, that we have room for on-street parking and that we're not have, yeah, we've already had issues with people parking on other streets where there's not enough available parking for residents. So I just, I really appreciate what you've done, but I um want you to still keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, and I, I uh have the same concerns as Valerie with parking as well. Um, so I just want to echo um what she said. Um, but in addition, so I actually, I had uh some residents reach out to me as well uh regarding the infill. And so I'm hoping that we can just get a little bit more information, and from my understanding as well, um, because I felt like I couldn't answer their questions um as well as I probably need to. So um, so for the infill, what, sort of what would that process look like? So um, as a scenario, let's say I live on a quiet cul-de-sac and there's, there's four houses and three of those houses now want to turn into duplexes. Like, is that going to be a possibility? And sort of what is that, what does that look like? So now, instead of having four houses on the small cul-de-sac, now there's, you know, uh, there, there will be many more. And so those are some concerns that I'm hearing, and of course, that's probably a, an extreme case. Um, but how will that be looked at as far as um going through that process of uh, you know, this would be approved, this wouldn't be approved, um, and then that parking kind of goes into that as well. Now you have this small area and you have so many more residents living in this area uh with many more cars. Um, so I'm kind of hearing those concerns, and so I wanted to be able to explain um how that process would look and um and what sort of impact that would have, you know. I think that the broader issue is what sort of impact would that have on a neighborhood?
Sure. Tabitha, I think, yeah, do you want to maybe talk through a little bit about the kind of the, you know, the application process? That, that would be helpful.
Sure, yeah. And I mean, certainly, we can talk about the, what's possible and of course, what's likely as well. Um, you know, certainly, in a lot of existing neighborhoods in the metro area where duplexes are allowed, three out of four houses suddenly, you know, selling at once, uh going through that process, not commonly seen, but of course possible. So we want to be prepared for that. Um, so in general, I mean, that's going to look like uh an application on an individual level where someone is most likely selling their property and someone buys it who wants to convert it, or someone who's living there wants to add a unit. Um, that would generally go through a staff-level architectural review process um where we would be looking at those, you know, those community design standards, the parking standards that are there, um, you know, landscaping setbacks and all of those elements. Um, is then possible, not knowing all of the details of the situation, that you could have something that is approved at that level? Um, I think from what I've seen, generally, actual uptake on that is, again, less common, especially a lot of the times when you see redevelopment of houses that exist today. Often that happens when essentially the home value becomes lesser compared to the land value. Um, that's not something that you're seeing a ton right now in Tuolton. Um, I don't know if John might have a little bit more detail on those scenarios.
Yeah, I, Tabitha, I would, I would agree. I think what we typically see is um, I, I think the, the bigger picture is it is, it is a case-by-case basis. So if you have a, you know, a property owner wanting to, you know, in, in this case, if we're talking infill, it's a vacant lot, then they have the ability to, to do with what's in the, the existing zoning with permitted uses, whether it's a, you know, duplex or a, or a triplex. So it is a case-by-case basis. I think when we're talking about redevelopment, so if you have an existing home, um, like Tabitha's saying, it's going to take quite a bit of, you know, uh, changes in the land improvement value, how much is my home worth versus to the land value for that property owner to say, geez, I think this makes sense to, you know, potentially tear this house down and build maybe a triplex or maybe I can fit, you know, a series of townhomes in there. Um, so there's kind of the economic side of things, the, you know, how much is my home worth to the value of my land? That, that is a very, you know, case-by-case basis kind of factor that we have to consider. Um, the other thing I think that's worth thinking about is the existing zoning requirements for things like, you know, like I, like we said, it, required off-street parking isn't going away. So there is uh, you still have to meet required parking, you'll still have to meet setbacks, you'll still have to meet, you know, the range of design requirements. So there are a lot of different conditions that you would have to meet. Um, so if you have a smaller lot, for example, and you're thinking about, you know, let's say I can add multiple units onto my lot, you, you would still have to go through that review process to make sure all of those things can fit within that lot. Um, so there, there are a lot of different things that would have to happen. Um, but I, I would say, I think it, it sounds like the question to me is if you had multiple property owners doing this all at the same time. And in that case, it really is, it's a case-by-case basis where it's up to those individual property owners to go through the development review process. Um, it's going to have to make their, you know, bottom line work for how much it's going to cost, how much they're potentially going to get back uh in, in um redevelopment or development. And there's also the zoning code requirements they're going to have to, to, to meet to make that happen. Um, so it's, it's going to be unique to that specific scenario.
That's helpful. Thank you. Um, and just, just one uh other question that I had. Is everything that we're, you know, that we're working on now and discussing, is this all um, is this all to just meet the state requirements, or is there anything that Tuolton is doing that's like above um and beyond what the, the state requirements are? Or in addition to?
That's a great que, that's a great question. Yeah, I can start that off. Uh, great question. We, we have met with the Planning Commission as well, and that's actually something that came up pretty early on was um, you know, are, are we, are we doing more than just what's required through um the, the state rules? And so I think at, at this point, where we are with the code amendments, is making sure at, you know, the bare minimum, we want to make sure what's, what's required is what's reflected in the amendments. Um, that's part of why we're doing this project. Um, but I think there's some other elements that we might be looking at with um the, the city's housing production strategy, or some different policies that uh the city might be considering for encouraging housing supply. But at this point, I would say um, we're, we're mostly, we're definitely in line with what the state rules require. Uh, but if there's anything, you know, that's kind of above and beyond, uh, I, I don't think we've, you know, got anything specific uh for that. Um, I think one thing that we have been talking about is, you know, kind of that flexibility. So if there's some flexibility in how we apply uh some of the design requirements, um, that's something that would definitely be, you know, more above and beyond uh what the uh House Bill 2001 requirements are. But yeah, at minimum, we're, we're definitely making sure we're meeting the state law. Um, but there's, there's definitely potential to add, you know, these other opportunities, if that's something that we want to explore.
That's okay. And then Counsel Ray.
Um, I have a concern. I, it just occurred to me that um, I know this is happening in the East Marlin area of Portland, and what's happening is developers will buy up um a house unit, even a fairly expensive one. And then what they're doing is they're putting really high-end duplexes or triplexes on them, and, and they're driving prices up, actually. It's having the opposite of fact of what HB 2001 was supposed to. So I'm wondering if we have any tools that um to help ensure that these will be middle and afford somewhat affordable housing for the people we're trying to target.
Well, I, I can talk to that one a little bit, John.
Sure.
Um, I, I mean, I, I think the answer to question, to, to your question, Counsel Pratt, and maybe just to, to tail end on uh Counselor Sacco's question, the emphasis based on our feedback from the Planning Commission and the public in drafting the amendments has been to focus on the livability issues that we heard about. And so we focused on trying as much as we can to make sure that there's adequate off-street parking, even though there are certain hard and fast parts of the rules that really don't want that. Um, and then similarly, you know, there are other things where we wanted to preserve the same building height for these type of um structures compared to single-family and that we didn't want to go higher. And we heard that from um, from the community as well. And so I think, to answer your question, in the long term, there are opportunities to perhaps create it, create an incentive, an incentive structure um that we would look at through our housing production strategy work, where we might say, hey, maybe it is worth um, you know, allowing for a reduction in parking if there's an affordability agreement in place or some, something like that, and that there are some other trade-offs here. I think just given the limited time that we have to make these changes, and again, what we heard pretty loudly and pretty consistently from the community and Planning Commission, I think as well as yourselves on the council, um, that we really just wanted to focus on ensuring that the livability issues were addressed first and foremost. And then we felt once uh, you know, market for these type of housing products develops, which there's not really one currently, there's not a lot of builders out there that build this product, um, that we would learn more about what are some of the trade-offs and levers that we can um have in place to encourage those more affordable types of this housing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, um, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I'm just, I'm curious, as we think about amending this, this new zoning, uh when you said parking uh for um, for instance, a duplex to, it's going to be, your recommendation is going to one. And remind me again, did you say in, in addition to the garage? Is that, so that would be two parking?
That's, that's correct. So the, the, the slide that we had up there that we're talking about, that's really the required number. So it's if the um, if the uh, yeah, the garage, the garage could be two. This is really that, you know, that driveway space essentially. Um, that's not on the street, it's not part of the house, it's, it's that parking space, it's up in front. That's correct.
Thank you. I just really wanted to uh just hear it again, that it was, it was what you were saying, that, what I heard, thinking. Um, as far as the HOA, I know you say, uh, I think it was Steve who said, that it is sort of encouraged or required for developers to have or, or implement some kind of HOA, and I do have a reason why. Um, I have met with the, at the time it was a diversity task force, and now it's changed its name to Tuoltonos. And they were, and I think Steve, you were part of this meeting, they were concerned about some properties that did not have HOA, and that's why there was, there were, there were some kind of disturbance at night. There was trash in, in, in the area, uh, and no one managing or monitoring this partic, these particular neighborhoods. So there were like sort of townhomes slash complex or something like that. So I just really want to bring that up because um, as we amend the, and I know that we can't literally make people do this or, but if it's in the amendment, it will help at least for developers to um have an HOA and, and, and when that happens, and I know it goes to the, to the consumer, it goes to the, to the property owner, the, the person that's renting or it goes to the um, the whoever's buying the townhome, the owner. But it still brings in, it will give that owner some kind of leverage to call the HOA and say, hey, what's going on here? You're not getting in the streets. I'm paying for this. So it, it just brings in a little bit of more control. And so I will advocate for something like that to be in the event, in the new amendment because of what I've heard in these communities that a lot of us might not visit, but they, there is a lot of, a lot of disturbances in that area, and it is because of lack of HOA. And it, I don't know if it's in our amendment or not, but I really want it to be in our amendment just because it will protect us. And also it will encourage people to make that phone call to the HOA and keep the property maintained, maintained. So that's, that's one of my comments, as far as what I'm reading or I'm seeing. I know we have to compromise, whereas when it comes to parking and developing because of, you know, we want housing, right? We want a bright housing. And it's not so much about, and this, these are all my thoughts as I'm listening to this presentation, so I'm giving you all my thoughts. But we have to compromise. We're thinking about providing housing. In my mind, I'm not thinking so much about people that are coming from the outside. I'm thinking of people that are already in our communities are looking to continue living in our communities, but they can't afford to buy a $400,000 home. And this can probably be their entry level home, or this could be their own, their home forever. It could be a townhome. I know people in our community that have, have been renting townhomes for 20 years. I mean, renting a townhome. So that means that if they own that whole townhome, they are like almost paid off from, of that townhome. So I just want us to, as a council, to think about that as we think of this amendment. It's not necessarily always the property value. It's not necessarily about whether my house is going to give higher property, but it's always also the fact that people are looking for these townhomes to live there forever. And it's not always they're going to sell because they need a home. Somebody needs, we need a home to live. So as we go through these amendments, I want to have that in mind, and I want to counsel, encourage the council to, to think outside, not just about property value. Yes, it is important to have property, property value, but there's also important to house people within our communities. And if we need to compromise parking or things like that, that are so accommodating for a lot of us, I think that it would be important to think about the people that need a home. And so I just think that I've been thinking about as I read the presentation and as I talk to my community. I just, I sometimes, you know, I, I don't know, we'll think about the environment. I can, you know, I think about the environment and cars are part of, you know, doing things to the environment. So when you have four parking spaces and you have four cars with two or three people living in this home, and that's all like, you're going to think about all that too. I mean, I try to be preachy or anything, I just, and think of that so we can compromise and make it better for the community, be more equitable in, in what we're building and how we want to see our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Grimes.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for the presentation. And I really appreciate the input and the thoughts from the other counselors because I think that they bring up some excellent points. My husband and I lived in the city of Portland before we moved to Walton specifically. We lived in the Laurelhurst neighborhood. And what we were seeing happen even then was homes that hadn't been updated, older homes in the neighborhood, developers were buying them and pulling them down. I mean, buying them for $350,000, $400,000, pulling them down. And rather than rebuild the single-family home that they were going to list for $550 or $600, they were building duplexes where each one could be $400,000. Granted, they were very nice duplexes, but it wasn't adding that much to the inventory of homes, but it was changing the face of the neighborhoods dramatically. You're putting twice as many people on the same size lot. Parking in a lot of the neighborhoods there as they are here are at a super premium, especially if by any chance you might be on a transportation or a school bus route. It really was difficult and it was starting to really develop some problems in established neighborhoods. And I can see some of the older neighborhoods in Walton possibly falling into that same sort of a system where, you know, you get a shrewd investor that picks up an older home and they take a one-level ranch. And the best profitability is to put multiples on that same lot. And, you know, when you're the other neighbors on the street or the other neighbors on the cul-de-sac, you know, that can really change the dynamics of things. And it can be a really unexpected surprise to neighbors who thought they were buying into one idea and one system and then end up with something very different. So, you know, if there's any type of regulations or codes where we can be a little bit more in charge of how that could play out, I'd be really interested in knowing like what parameters there might be that we could look at. And also what concerns me about that type of infill housing, in addition to the parking, which is a huge problem, is also that most of those are multi-story build-in infill. And, you know, we're still looking for, you know, aging in place seniors that want single-story living. And that's not what you get with a multi-story film in or even a townhouse. That just isn't, that's not the right fit for what we're looking for. So I have some concerns about that. And then also with the HOA, it's not being most likely a very fiscally fair system for, if we're looking to try to get affordable housing, a couple hundred dollars additional a month for an HOA can really be just completely sink that ship. Is there a way that we could either add a fee or designate part of like an SDC fee for like a full-time code officer? To take the place of that, to, we could still have, you know, the, help people with maintaining and issues in their neighborhood, but not having it be on the back of the same people that were trying to get into affordable housing? So that was a question I had about a code enforcement person. And then I just wanted to reiterate, I underline everything that Counselor Sacco and Counselor Pratt said. I think they're really good points. And from my lived experience, I've seen it happen. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Hillier.
Thank you. And thank you to my fellow counselors. I think you've covered every question that I had. And as well as the presentation. So thank you to John and Steve and Tabitha and team. So I, I guess I go back also to that compliance, that HOA question. And certainly parking would be first in my thoughts, because I talk to people who work at the hospital who live over kind of in some of the, the bigger developments. They have to, late at night after they're off-ship, worry about where can they park and because there's no designated spot. And so I think parking is really already on the minds in a variety of different communities. And I guess my question about, we, we already know that capacity for a compliance person for the codes, if we were to not have the HOA, which again, I, I understand can be a huge financial burden, and there really are no for sure outcomes with that. And I just wondered who's going to, you know, do we have the infrastructure in Walton today to support that? So, you know, I'm just not sure about the capacity for us to do that.
Thank you, Counselor Hillier. I just wanted to address maybe quickly the HOA question because it was raised by a couple of different counselors. I know we're running a little tight on time, so I'll try to be brief. Really, the HOA is, is in, in essence, a feasibility analysis. I think that we, we don't, without much more study, we wouldn't know what to require an HOA to require. It's kind of one of the threshold issues there in addition to the cost. And so, I mean, again, if it was something the city was interested in long-term, I think that we could study it, but it's just outside of the bounds of what we're doing here. And then we do have a code enforcement officer in building codes. On one of the slides back there, we suggested the idea of the creation of a rental compliance program. And so that would be something that would be fee-funded, typically like a landlord would pay a fee for that to the city, similar to a business license. And then that program go through. I think it's similar, something that we see as a potential strategy, but would need to study it a little further. And so it is identified in the housing production strategy. And then I guess just the last closing comment on our behalf is that I think that, you know, we, we understand a lot of the concerns. And I'll just say that I was at the table for some of the writing of these rules in the first place. And a lot of the suburban communities did, where they're saying, hey, we, we should have a different set of rules that apply to the suburbs. But unfortunately, that wasn't the way in which the codes were ultimately written. And so at a certain point, we, we do have some hard limits on some of the things that we can require. And I think that, you know, John and his team, and we really pushed him on this issue to try to find creative ways to continue to essentially make it so that whatever middle housing gets built looks and feels very single-family in character. And yes, there's really no way to get around the fact that it is going to be allowed everywhere by the law and that, you know, that that is a greater impact in terms of households in a given area. But that's, I mean, we're, we're trying really hard. We've heard you, we've heard everyone, and we're, we hope that we've gotten as close to possible on that as we can. And so thank you all for your comments and thanks for the feedback and we'll look forward to meeting again.
Right. Well, thank you, Steve. I'm not going to have any questions for, because we're falling behind. I can catch up with you guys later on. Just wanted to reiterate what Steve said. The House bill wasn't written for the burbs, it was written for the city. We all know it was written for the city of Portland. And the mayors in all the rural area, rural and suburban fought back a lot of the provisions of these house bills. But we couldn't get all of them. So now we're trying to implement these, and that's why some cities around us are having a very difficult time trying to implement these new regulations. I want to thank the team that's doing that for us, because we seem to be moving on pretty fairly well. And very much appreciate John's assistance in this. So thank you. So moving on, item number two is, we gotta, we keep talking about it, and here it is now. The review discussion of Walton's housing production strategy. And I see there's Karen.
Thanks, Mayor. So I'm going to start out with the presentation tonight. We have Karen Pearl Fox, senior housing program analyst, and then our consultant, who's going to take over midway through the presentation or so. Beth Goodman from ECO Northwest. Got the presentation loaded up here. So just for the record, Steve Kuper, Assistant Community Development Director. Thanks for the last conversation, council. Good to see you all again and good to be here. Can you turn to the next slide, please? Okay, so as you can see, we're continuing our Walton 2040 work in process and have entered the implementation phase. We've completed the comp plan update. And we're about midway through completion of the middle housing code, code update amendments. And we are also about midway through our housing production strategy, tonight's topic. Next slide, please. Tonight, we're here to present a draft update on the housing production strategy report, following up on our conversation in February as we continue on track to have a completed report by the end of third quarter 2021. Next slide, please.
And I'm sorry, I don't know who's, who's running the presentation, but could you put it in slideshow mode?
Oh, thank you.
Um, sure. Um, okay.
Thank you, Beth. So a quick recap of House Bill 2003, which provides the framework and structure as well as content for the housing production strategy report. So it's passed in 2019, around the same time as House Bill 2001. It applies to cities over 10,000, which includes Walton. And so we're required to develop the housing production strategy based on our most recent housing needs analysis, which was 2018. And then ultimately adopted in the conference of plan in 2020. And the housing production strategy, which you'll see tonight, identifies Walton's further commitment to implement policies, which we're now calling goals, excuse me, or strategic actions to address the housing needs. Next slide, please. And so although House Bill 2003 provides the framework for the housing production strategy, we've of course worked extensively in the community and with the planning commission to tailor the report to the needs of Walton and look forward to your input. So you've had a, some community engagement. We've had four meetings with the planning commission, working through this report, which is very dense and has a lot of moving parts. And then we are hoping to work behind the scenes to finalize the housing production strategy report based on your input this evening, and then bring it back to you for adoption by resolution later this summer, potentially July. Next slide, please. And then once an adoption, or excuse me, once the resolution is adopted by council, the work begins. At the end of your staff report, you'll find a table titled Exhibit One, Schedule for Evaluating, Adopting, and Implementing the Strategic Actions. This takes each of the goal, the 12 goals that you'll see later in the presentation tonight, and has strategic actions associated with each of those goals that intended to help achieve the goal, and also provides a timeline to evaluate and consider adoption and implementation over the next six years. And then at the end of the six years, we'll report out to the state. A couple of brief insights about the timeline, the first of which is that it's a projection of where a strategic action might happen in the next six years. It's not set in stone. There's a lot of factors that could change the timing of each of these actions or whether they happen at all. And then the second insight is that many, if not most of these actions will require working closely with you as a council to implement. And so you'll, you'll see them again and you'll have input on the timing and the quality and the quantity of how these actions are completed. It's by no means a set it and forget it exercise. We expect and look forward to continued council input and feedback on how best to achieve your priorities around housing. And then lastly, in the interest of keeping the council in the loop about the progress of all strategic actions, we're committed to at a minimum biennial reporting, although we'd certainly be happy to provide an annual report if the council would like. And next slide, and Beth, you can take it from here. Thank you.
Okay, so what we wanted to do, we went over some of this back in February. We wanted to go over a few pieces about Walton's key housing needs as a reminder, just in case you've forgotten. So looking very high level at cost burden. So these are households who can't afford their current housing costs. 56% of Walton's households who are renters were cost burdened. 26% of whom were severely cost burdened. And that means that they were paying 50% or more of their income for housing costs. Simply being cost burden means that you're paying 30% or more of your income for housing costs. We see lower rates of cost burden among homeowners. And part of the reason for that is banks lending policies. So it's a little harder to become a homeowner and harder yet to become cost burdened as a homeowner. So the idea with the housing production strategy is over time, and more housing would be produced, especially more housing that serves your low-income households, your underserved communities. And eventually cost burden might well be decreased. That could take a substantial amount of time now, and it's as much a factor of the housing market as, as anything else. So speaking of housing affordability, you can think about it in different groups of housing affordability. So households that earn less than 50% of the median family income, which is $92,000. Households that earn less than 50% of that. These households tend to, the housing that's affordable to them tends to be regulated affordable housing. So when you talk about affordable housing, that's what people are thinking about that these households can afford. When you look at between 50 and 80% of median family income, market rate housing is generally at about 60% of median family income. These households can often afford housing that's market rate. Some of them are of course cost burdened. But some of them are able to afford it. Housing is rarely built that's affordable between a monthly rent of 1,500, sorry, $1,150 and $1,850. So in other words, you rarely see new housing that's built with rents around those unless they have some amount of subsidy from unless they have some amount of subsidy, um, from, uh, government, um, either local state, um, other subsidy. So not much of this housing is going to be built, um, unless something changes, unless the city pushes in some way. Um, housing that's affordable between 80 and 100%, sorry, 80 and 120% of median family income. When you talk about multifamily housing, that kind of housing is typically built. It doesn't typically need a subsidy to be built. Um, and then at the lower end of this or at the upper end of this income, people start to be able to afford homeownership. Um, and then of course, most of the new housing that's built for homeownership is affordable at this high end range. Um, so 120% of median family income or above. A lot of this information is included in the housing production strategy report. What we're showing here is the fact that you've got, uh, current households, um, here that are in the extremely low and the very low income group. We've stacked your current households plus your new households, looking at a little more than a thousand new households together. So you're looking at, um, nearly 4,000 households that'll be in your extremely low and your very low income categories. It's a lot of households, of course. Um, in your, uh, low income category, this is the housing that is typically not built very often, um, but affordable to, uh, people at, at rates that rents are charged for. Um, your middle income housing, which we've also changed to call it your moderate income housing. So we don't get confused with House Bill 2001. Um, this housing is, is built, it's multifamily, it's also some amount of single family. Um, and again, your higher income housing, this is where your, your largest income group is in Twalton. So this is current as well as projected in the future. Are there any questions about, um, your key housing needs?
Oh, I actually believe.
We're gonna, we're gonna hold the questions for that. Sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, I'll hold the questions. All right. So your, uh, preliminary, um, policies for the goals for the housing production strategy. Before we get started, um, talking about this, want to remind you, um, a little bit about what Twalton's role, um, in housing production can be. So Twalton, um, can obviously directly influence public policy. You guys said it for the most part, at least in part. Um, uh, you can also directly influence land and infrastructure. So you've got land within your city limits. The city, of course, has a, a responsibility for building infrastructure out to, uh, out to areas that would be developed. Um, you have limited influence on market feasibility. So market feasibility is making sure that housing is built, um, uh, and it's supportable with the, um, rents that can be charged or the sales prices. So the city can do some things and certainly the housing production strategy poses these things that influence market feasibility. There are things like tax exemptions, looking at reduced SDCs in some cases. Looking at, um, we were talking about parking, um, requirements. Looking at lower parking requirements can lead to lower development costs. Um, so in certain cases, that may be desirable. Um, the, uh, the developer, of course, um, has to get access to capital and cities don't usually have a large role to play in access to capital. So you've got a role, um, but you're not the only role in town. When we talk about types of strategies, we talk about each of these kind of strategies. Um, some strategies have less impact. So producing informational resources or partnerships to lever, uh, leverage efforts and resources. They are directly in and of themselves less impactful, but I would say that they are necessary in a lot of cases, um, to supporting production of housing and affordable housing. Um, in other words, your partnerships may be, uh, very important in getting housing production done. Um, when you move up the roles, um, you're looking here at regulatory barriers. Obviously, in and of itself, regulatory barriers often can't produce housing, but they make it easier to produce housing, removing them. And here we start talking about, um, money and resources. So reducing or waiving upfront charges for development, actually using money, allocating money, money to affordable housing development. Um, if the city has surplus land or a partner has surplus land, um, the city can, uh, put that into an affordable housing development, um, to support it. These are all actions that are much more impactful. If you think about each of the, uh, um, each of the goals we'll be presenting in a few moments as having a package of actions, they're designed to be some combination of these kind of actions for the most part that work together to support housing development. So for the strategic actions identified in the final housing production strategy, the city's commitment is, um, to a six-year implementation plan for these identified strategies or similar altern, alternatives. What if, as you're evaluating some of these things, you figure out, uh, we just can't do that? That that strategy is simply not going to work for the city of Twalton? Well, you need to look at the other, um, strategic actions that you have to address the housing need. So if the housing need, um, for instance, was for, um, development of affordable rental housing and you find that, that one of the strategies you're looking at just won't work, do you have other strategies that'll support development of affordable housing? If so, you may be fine. Um, if not, you may need to identify an alternative strategy, um, to address that housing need. Then you need to update DLCD on your implementation progress and required to eventually comment on its effectiveness in the future. Um, so these are all things you'll have to do, um, either in three years or when you do your next housing production strategy in six years. So you're not committed in stone to doing the things that are in your HPS. We've written your HPS, so it's very much, um, an evaluation period and then a decision. Um, and then if you decide to go forward with it, an implementation of it. So you say, what if we identify some strategy that's not in the HPS? Can we do it? Um, of course you can still do it. Um, it's simply not one that's in your HPS. If you identify a strategy that's better than one of the ones that you have in your HPS and you choose not to, um, implement the one in the HPS, then I think you could probably substitute that new strategy that you identified. Um, what DLCD has said is that they're looking for cities to make a good faith effort, effort to implement the, implement the strategies. They're not looking to penalize, uh, cities if implementation is not successful. And that's been consistently what we've heard from DLCD staff about this. So we're going to go through the, um, goals and some of the strategies, strategic actions. And the questions we're asking of you are, what are the strategic actions you think that are most critical? If there are any. Are there any strategic actions you think are missing? So did we miss something? Are there any actions that the city should not pursue? Um, anything that we proposed, it just sounds wrong. If so, why? Um, and then if you have any broad comments about the timing of strategic actions, um, we can incorporate those comments now. As Steve said, he'll be, uh, he and Karen and Aaron will be working with you on further revisions to the HPS, um, as this continues to go forward. All right, goal one is about affordable housing. And so this is, um, government subsidized income restricted housing. So it's housing that's affordable to households that have income of less than 60% of median family income. And in the report, we characterize exactly what median family income means in terms of, of income. Um, so some of the actions are evaluating a low income housing property tax exemption um, for development of income restricted housing. There's two of them. The city could choose to implement, um, either. Cities don't generally implement both, um, they're, they're, they have a lot of overlap. Um, implementation of a construction excise tax. We've got that out there later in the, uh, um, in the schedule, um, a few years in. Um, in part because, uh, construction excise tax works best when the city's housing production is going a little bit faster. So more housing production means that your house, uh, construction excise tax would produce more revenue. Um, Twalton's opportunities for housing production are really tied in a large part to redevelopment when you start talking about larger numbers of, uh, new units. Because you guys just don't have enough, a lot of land. And then evaluate, um, support for affordable housing as part of urban renewal. Your urban renewal process is ongoing, of course. Um, and so this is tying into that and seeing how, uh, whether and how the city wants to, um, support it through urban renewal. So that's about affordable housing from a rental perspective. Goal two is about affordable housing from a homeownership perspective. When we are here in February, we heard that this was a very important goal for you guys. Um, and so we've been paying more attention to it and looking at impediments, um, to homeownership. Um, in your development code, um, your development rules, all of that. Partnering with nonprofits, um, organizations to, um, promote homeownership, um, education. Also looking at partnerships with organizations that develop, um, affordable homeownership options. And this is for households that are, um, at 60% of median family income. And sometimes, um, some, uh, some work with households that are below 60% of median family income. Preservation of affordable housing, it's one of the most of them, uh, uh, one of the most impactful and less expensive things to do is make sure you consider, continue having your affordable housing that's existing as affordable. So this one's about how do you support, uh, preserve regulated affordable rental housing? Um, uh, there's, um, certain ways to do this and working with your three, uh, three rental housing developments that are regulated affordable. Looking at a healthy housing initiative, um, which looks at redevelopment, um, actually rehabilitation. So what I was looking for, um, and looks to keeping, uh, existing housing, um, in the stock as affordable. And then of course, preserving your naturally occurring affordable housing, your NOA. Um, and so one way to do that is, um, to support rehabilitation. One tool to support rehabilitation is looking at the multiple, um, property unit, multiple unit property tax exemption, which can give a tax exemption as a way of supporting, um, the costs of rehabilitation with an agreement that the housing will continue to be relatively affordable. Um, in getting that agreement in any of these, uh, actions regard, uh, related to, uh, privately owned housing. That's an important thing to do. So housing for underserved communities, um, goal five is, is really about looking at, uh, issues of equity. So one of the most important strategies here is, uh, development of a funding action plan to implement the rest of the HPS. Um, that ends up being an equity question in part because the, uh, HPS is at its heart trying to, um, produce more equitable, um, outcomes. Evaluating ways to, uh, uh, best ensure opportunities for education about fair housing. Um, so educating not just your landlords, but your tenants, your staff, um, your decision makers, getting people more familiar with fair housing, uh, requirements, um, and ensuring that fair housing, uh, rules are being, uh, applied. Your workforce housing, when we did the economic opportunities analysis, um, frankly, the EOA and the HNA, we heard a lot about people living and working in Twalton and how getting that to happen more frequently was very important. So you'd have less commuting. Um, well, this goal focuses on that. Um, one of the actions is about potential partnerships with employers on employer assisted housing. Do you have employers who, who want to do some form of the, uh, employer assisted housing? Um, what can the city play, um, what role can the city play in supporting that? Housing stabilization, so this is about preventing gentrification, um, and pushing people, displacing people out of the city. So looking at, uh, opportunities to partner on a rental and utility assistance program. I believe that work on that is already ongoing. Evaluating ways to develop, uh, housing options and services that prevent houselessness. So obviously this is a big issue, um, across the region. Um, uh, and this action is, uh, sort of an early action in figuring out what the city can do um, with its partners potentially of, uh, Washington County Tigerd, um, uh, to prevent and address houselessness. Rehabilitation, this is a goal that's really about rehabilitation for, um, owner occupied housing. Um, and one of the actions is evaluating and establishing a local housing rehabilitation program. Um, and how would the city fund it and what would the city choose to include in it? Um, you can see that there's a lot of things to consider there. Okay, accessible and specialized design. So this is looking at, um, policies, um, related to things like universal design, um, lifelong housing certification, other similar standards. So looking at, uh, development of specialized design standards and small incentives to accommodate those special needs. Um, so you wouldn't necessarily expect all new housing to be built to, uh, to fit this, uh, universal design that might add a fair bit of cost to housing development. Um, but can you incentivize, um, accommodating these needs in some instances? Goal 10, mixed use housing and redevelopment. This is really the core of how you'd address, um, growth in Twalton. You've got a certain amount of vacant land, but you don't have a lot. Um, we heard a lot in the housing needs analysis about, um, redevelopment and mixed use housing. So, um, these, these actions are all about, um, looking at opportunities for creation of mixed use development districts to support affordable and workforce housing. Evaluating opportunities for conversion of existing commercial, uh, buildings, um, for residential uses. So these are buildings that are essentially unused at this point. Could you be use them for residential uses? And of course, that includes a partnership with the owner, um, of the buildings. Cause that's something that the owner would have to want to do. Goal 11 is about regulatory and zoning changes. Um, and I think you just heard about a few of them, um, in the House Bill 2001 discussion. But evaluating updating your density standards for multifamily housing in some of your zones. Um, evaluating the feasibility of targeted reductions of off-street, uh, parking requirements. Um, I think we've heard loud and clear that the city, of course, doesn't want to remove all off-street, uh, parking requirements. But in, uh, selected cases, it can certainly be a way to support development of regulated affordable housing and other types of affordable housing. And then the last goal is about transportation and public infrastructure. Um, because where you have housing development occur, you have to have infrastructure to support it. So looking at ways to prioritize your capital improvements, um, for where you're planning for affordable housing. So I feel like I've just pelted through those very quickly. And we come back to our questions for discussion. Steve, shall I turn it back over to you to handle, uh?
Yeah, I think what we, what we'd like to do is we have, um, I'm not sure what's on the next slide. Can you, um, forward, do we have? Um, so maybe we'll just have, um, right now and then I'll, I'll read through the slide. Um, our planning commission chair, Bill Beers, is here this evening, council. Um, and as I mentioned in one of the earlier slides, we've met with them four times. They've effectively served as our, uh, community advisory committee for this project. And so, um, Chair Beers is here to share with you the planning commission's experience and, um, the recommendation that they've made on the work that has been presented them so far.
Hello, Mayor and councilors. Um, I'll keep my remarks pretty brief. But as Steve said, we kind of doubled up on our planning commission meetings for the first part of this year. Um, so each time we met with, uh, Beth and her team and with, uh, the folks from the city staff, we were focused just on this task. Um, and so I guess the main takeaway from us was that we've got these 12 goals and each of them have, um, actions to support those goals. And we know that we may, probably won't be able to implement all of them. Uh, but we were thinking of this as like a toolbox and that some of these tools are going to work well and we don't know which ones they are. And we didn't want to have too many or too few. So this, a dozen goals with supporting actions is kind of where, where we ended up. There definitely seem to be some, uh, where we can work with, uh, Metro or other cities because a, a lot of people will be doing the same kind of work. Um, like there's some in goal two and goal five and goal seven. And I think there's some, definitely some opportunities for other people to work with other people that are also doing this work. Um, and then, uh, I just wanted to say, when you get to the, the schedule for evaluating, adopting and implementing, um, we had a lot of questions about that and, uh, both Beth and her team and then, uh, Steve and Karen Tabitha were able to answer all of our questions. Some of those columns with the dates for, um, evaluation and then implementation seemed a little bit weird, but they were, it, you can't pack all that information into a chart. And, uh, so we had some good discussion around that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Beers. Um, Beth, if you mind, just moving the slide forward and then we can go back to the questions for discussion. So um as you mentioned, I think in the beginning of the presentation, the next steps include finalizing the HPS. So it's actually, um you've seen the goals and some of the examples of the strategies tonight. You have the full goals and strategies in your staff report in that fairly large table. And then um owing to just some of the technical details and explanations of how and why the strategies were picked, like Chair Beers mentioned, um there's a whole bunch of other pages that'll ultimately be in the document that you'll see. I think that it's around the hundred and fifty plus page mark right now. And so um we are continuing to work on um QA QC on that document and we'll have that back for you. Um, our hope is to have the housing production strategy um back to you for adoption in July. Obviously, if we hear any changes that we need to make that would alter that schedule, we're, of course, prepared for that possibility. And then, as we mentioned, um the work, really the adoption, I guess I just want to emphasize this point that adoption of the HPS is, like Bill mentioned, we've basically said this is our toolbox and then we're going to go through implementation. And so some of them are going to work, some are not. Some of the timing of them are going to change around and maybe even some of them are going to kind of twist a little bit. And then, of course, there may even be strategies that we didn't envision and that weren't among the list of best practices that we thought might work in Tuolton that will be added to the mix of things to support um housing production. And so with that, Beth, if you wouldn't mind just going back to the preceding slide so we can. Our last slide is just to open up for questions, but we can just leave that on the screen for a sec to see all can see what our questions were. Um, and then I'll give it a second more. And then, if you wouldn't mind ending the share screen, Beth, and then we can pop back in if needed. So that concludes our presentation and we're here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you all. Counselor Pratt.
Um, well, um, I want to thank Beth for acknowledging our concerns about the um reduction in parking and the issues that can cause. Um, other than that, um, I mean, this is amazingly, just our overview is so dense and seems so thorough. I just want to thank all of you for your hard work with the planning commission and Steve, Karen, Erin, Beth, anybody else that was involved. Because I can't imagine how much you had to go through to get it culled down to this pretty dense overview you gave us. So thank you very much.
Counselor Sacco.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Um, and to answer the first question, it I think was what do you feel is most critical? Um, looking through this list, um personally, I would think um for myself, the affordable housing rent and ownership um is definitely um high priority. The preservation of affordable housing, we don't want to put all this work into creating affordable housing um just to have it um skyrocket in price. And then housing for the underserved communities is also high priority for me. Um, and I see some of these as as supporters of those. Um, so things like um the like the zoning changes, which is eleven. Um, mixed use housing and redevelopment supports that as well. Uh, but I kind of see those as like the top three um in my eyes. Uh, and then the only question that I had um had to do with goal nine, which was the special needs. Um, I'm wondering how we're defining special needs? And how do we ensure that we support the correct? That's not the right word. Um, how do we um ensure we're supporting the the needs that are out there? That we're filling the needs that are out there with um under that special needs category? So we're not putting, you know, time and effort into um something that there isn't a demand for in our city.
Steve, do you want me to take the first?
If you wouldn't mind, please. Thank you.
No worries. Um, so this is really about uh people experiencing uh people with disabilities. Um, and of course, there's a range of disabilities. Um, housing production strategy document um provides information um about people with with disabilities um such as uh vision and hearing disabilities, um uh issues with mental health, um uh other disabilities that aren't immediately obvious. Um, and so in looking at what we've done in uh what we've set up in in action nine, looking at existing standards um uh and existing ways of looking at uh accessibility and disability. Um, that is, uh, in other words, look to existing best practices um to to figure out how you could address some of these uh these special needs. Um, and some of the best practices um end up being about trauma informed uh uh design, of course. Then you've got the physicality of it, you know, wide enough doors, um uh so on and so forth. Um, so there's a a wide range of things um that the city um might do. And of course, any developer could choose to do these on their own. Um, and unless for some reason they violated, which I have a hard time imagining, um uh state building standards. Um, and so that's that's what I would say is the beginning of looking at special needs. It may well be that by the time you come back to your next housing production strategies, you understand special needs in a deeper way. Um, because along with implementing all of this is going to come a lot of discussions um with people in your community. And I think that by the time you come back to the next HPS, there'll be a little bit of, oh, why didn't we think about that before? Um, but you know no more now, so.
I would just like to add that affordable housing often includes units uh that are specialized uh design, universal design. And so they can be incorporated into a project like that that's done by a nonprofit or private developer. So that's an opportunity there in multifamily housing typically, but not always. Sometimes it's other types of housing. But really, the other type of housing, I mean, not only does there need to be demand and that could be from veterans, for example, um which every community has a fair number of for the most part. Um, but uh it can um it can it it could really use some type of incentive in order to get off the ground.
President Grimes.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the work on this. I feel like sitting through this presentation, I have a much clearer succinct idea of the changes that will need to be made and some of the directions we need to go. And I appreciate calling down of the information in such a succinct way that I thought was very, very good. Um, I'm very interested in senior housing and the ability for people that live in the city of Tuolton to age in place, given the proximity to world-class healthcare that we have here, the reasonable small size of our downtown and the accessibility of stores and um department stores and everything that we have here. So I'm wondering, can we call out senior housing, um aging in place, maybe under goal nine? Is that where it would go? And then my other question is, I don't think I know what lifelong housing certification needs. Um, if someone could call uh explain that to me, I would appreciate it.
That's about senior housing, essentially, making your housing um accessible um for people all along their their lifespan. Um, and so there isn't any, leave aside the type of senior housing that is development on a golf course, which which isn't what we're talking about here in Tuolton. There isn't any one type of housing that is senior housing. Um, so when you look at the housing preferences for seniors, um what they consistently stay in surveys is they'd like to continue aging in place in their house as long as they can, a lot of them. Um, if they don't want that, then they're looking at downsizing to something that has uh less maintenance to it. Um, so some of your missing middle housing types could well be that. You could look at cottage housing, especially if it's one-floor cottage housing. Um, it could be that. Your multifamily housing um could be that as well. Your multifamily housing in a mixed-use area could certainly be that um because it takes away some of the pressures if if the mixed-use area has enough mixes of of uses, um enough services, et cetera. It can take away some of the pressures for um for a need for driving. Um, and so I would say senior housing isn't any one thing, but senior housing is certainly part of what's included under um goal nine. Um, looking at uh who has disabilities, well, as people age, disabilities increase um more. Um, as as you know, you eventually may have uh 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 impairments that are ambulatory impairments, et cetera. Um, so senior housing um is definitely included under uh the uh the special housing needs in goal nine. Um, but it's not any one type of structure. Um, certainly, um, if you have an organization that wants to to build, say, uh uh housing that includes independent living through assisted living, through um uh something that's more like um nursing care, um that's a type of housing that could be built already in Tuolton. Um, unless uh Steve or or Karen or Erin knows impediments to that kind of housing, that that's already allowed. Um, so so I think realizing that it's it's a just a wide range of housing types.
Yes, I I agree with that and it also could be included in affordable housing, workforce housing, mixed-use housing. Any it could fall under any of those categories, components of senior housing. So and they usually are some component. It's not not unusual, especially with affordable housing, that it would include um some senior houses.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm thinking specifically of things like um single-story dwellings, um a single-story, smaller units that have a limited um outdoor space that residents have to maintain. And I know a lot of affordable housing tends to be um vertical units, which you get a lot of space and you get a lot of space in a small lot that way. But it's not super conducive to people that are trying to um age in place and stay in the community because stairs and that type of thing are such a a restriction to people being able to access it. Um, so I'm just trying to think of all the different ways that we could encourage that sort of senior living development when we make these changes. So I appreciate your criticism.
Ms. Reyes, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Um, I agree with Counselor uh Sacco with some of the some of the focus, I mean, based on your questions that you asked. Um, you wanted to uh kind of find out what actions were critical, actions should be taken um or what is missing. I think that um I do agree with what she selected, you know, the the, I think it was goal one, uh given that um renters in Tuolton are burden, cost burden. So that uh I can see that being um one of the one of the goals that I would like to see. Um, the other one, uh, in addition to what she mentioned, I actually don't want to get rid of the mixed use. Uh, we have goal, um, I think it's goal number um eight or number ten. Um, because I feel like there is a lot, there are a lot of buildings in or like lots and particularly in the area where um basics is or there are certain areas that seem that you can develop uh to do some mixed uses there or encourage some kind of residential above, kind of like what we have by Providence, um, Rosa Bridgeport. Those apartment complexes, they have Lugano's and those restaurants there and then the nail partner. And then on top, they have these really nice complexes. I don't, I really want to see that more, it within the Boons Ferry McDonald's area kind of thing. Um, and I don't know what I would get rid of because I think Karen mentioned it uh very well. When you find, when you do this affordable housing, you have to include, you have to be equitable. Um, I have worked with developers where they, when we've done housing for affordable, you have to have for seniors. You have to have it for uh special needs, accessibility. And um so all of that is part of that uh that affordable housing. Um, I guess there are all components that go base with it. So um I don't know what, when you say get rid of the of like something that's missing. I think you kind of have everything here and some I think that we shouldn't pursue. I I wouldn't, I don't know, most of it has already been, uh, it's part of the affordable housing that I can see. But that's just me based on your questions um that you've asked. And the timing or the timeline, oh, no, I can't have an answer on that. But um I think it will come as as we continue moving forward. Um, it will be when it will be, I think, I'm not sure. But that's just what I I'm seeing on your questions. Thank you for asking us these questions because I think it it will help us also think critically. So um I definitely want to add the rehab in addition to questions uh of what um Counselor Sacco mentioned. I think the mixed use rehab or mixed use, um, I guess housing would be a very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for on the subject? All right, um, I'm just gonna, my two cents, uh, goals ten, eleven and twelve are critical when we get into our renewal planning. Uh, you gotta have all those three uh in my mind to look at doing an urban result renewal zone down at Salt Creek and a possible urban renewal zone sometime somewhere around downtown Tuolton. So those three goals to me are kind of front burner in addition to uh creating affordable housing. But ten, eleven and twelve, we're going to have to nail, in my mind, what we'll be dealing with sooner than later uh when we start talking the nitty-gritty of urban renewal zones here in the city. Anything? Anything else on this one? All right, well, thank you, Bill, for attending tonight. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thank you.
I just want to say um that I I really do appreciate the heavy lift that the team, the staff team, the consultant team and the planning commission has done. This is a lot of work and I know that we went through two hours, it could have been two hours more. Um, so and thank you for your input, but it and it, you know, it's a heavy lift. So thank you for for going through it with us. Your staff did a lot of work. Um, I I can't say how much I appreciate how much uh input they had.
All right. All right, so with that, we now get into our meeting agenda review communications and roundtable. Uh, let me look here. So on the pledge, I think that is up to, is that up to you, Counselor Pratt, or did you do it last time? As Counsel Grimes said, I think President Grimes did it last time, so I think you have it this week. Uh, and then uh the proclamation for uh National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Tuolton. Who would like to do that? Councilor Hillier, you got it. All right, uh, any questions on the consent agenda tonight? Got quite a big one, seven items on it. Are you okay with it? Counselor Hillier.
I just wanted to, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to share with the council the, just the question that I had just in regards to some of the um OLCC. It's in for item number two, and I'm in no way opposed to it. So I just want to make that very clear as we start, as I say this. I was just um interested that on the application, it tells when um their hours of food service are and then when hours of um alcohol service. And they don't necessarily match, but it's because we think it's there, it's an over twenty-one um establishment. And so I just thought it was kind of an interesting thing um to note that um you don't have to serve food the entire time um that you're allowed to serve alcohol. So I just wanted to point that out.
All right. Thank you.
And say thank you to staff for helping me understand it, sorry.
All right. Uh, with that, we have about ten minutes left. So would you rather take a ten-minute break? And then we do our council roundtable at the end of the city council meeting? Or would you rather launch into it now? Like the straight faces, no answer. Okay, I'll I'll. Okay, I'll, I'll make executive decision, let's take a break for ten minutes. And we'll come back at seven and we'll do our roundtable at the end of our regular meeting. So we'll see if we're back in about ten minutes.